This time I'd like to call the December meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time I'd like to call Mr. Jimmy Rogers to lead us in the board prayer, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Board members, please rise for the board prayer.
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly father, we want to thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. Lord, we thank you for the gift that you gave us during this time of year, the season of giving, the season of being thankful. Lord, we're thankful for the many things you have given us. And Lord, we pray that your many blessings in your loving arms are wrapped around so many within this county, this state, this country, this nation. They've experienced sickness, health disasters, death. Lord, we pray that you be with this country throughout these times. Lord, we pray especially that you be with our Haywood County schools, our children, our staff. The citizens of Haywood County, help guide us and direct us and help comfort us when we have times of sorrow, times of hurt, enduring sickness, heal us. Lord, we also pray that you help us do the best that we can to educate children and give them the best opportunities and the best education available. And Lord, we know that you're with us and soon these times will pass. And Lord, help us all as we make decisions for this school system. Thank you again, Lord, for our staff and for everyone that's worked so hard and so diligently. And our other county officials, Lord, that have helped us make decisions, that help make decisions for the lives of our children and our teachers and our staff. Guide and direct us, Lord, in all that we do, and we'll give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. First of all, I'd like to welcome our newest board member tonight, Mr. Logan Nesbit. Well, he was sworn in earlier this afternoon as being our newly elected board member. Welcome, Logan. We're glad to have you with us and we look forward to your expertise and and if I can ever be of service to you or you need help from any of the board members, I'm sure they'll be glad to work with you. So, welcome. Glad to have you here. I'd also like to announce that Mr. Henson was not able to be here tonight, but he is calling in. So, he'll be able to participate in the meeting this evening and Larry, just don't let me forget to get your votes and stuff, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. He's there. One other thing. The school nutrition winter break meal kits, I needed to announce this tonight. There's a free seven-day meal kit for children ages one to eighteen. This is from our child nutrition program. It's curbside pickup at Canton Middle School or Tuscaloosa High School on Tuesday, December twenty-second from four-thirty to six-thirty PM, one box per child while supplies last. For additional information, please contact our nutrition program at six-two-seven-one-one-five-zero. That's six-two-seven-one-one-five-zero for the Haywood County Schools' winter break meal kits. Are there any other announcements that need to be made? I'd just like to say thank you to the staff that helped decorate for our Christmas board meeting tonight. It looks really nice and I appreciate the Christmas spirit. Under agenda adjustments, I know that we need to add an item from building the grounds, at least one or two. Is that right?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, we'll add it right before the finance committee at between twenty-one and twenty-two. We'll call it twenty-one B or something like that. So, we'll still get that on there. So, they have a couple items they'd like to bring forward to the board. Are there any other adjustments that need to be made?
I need to add one for sure.
Okay.
On with finance.
Okay.
Possibly two, depending on how long.
Okay. We'll leave that open for one or two items under the finance committee. All right. I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Mr. Burmett's made the motion. I hear second. Second by Mr. Clark. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. This time I'd introduce Ms. Ginny Wood.
Good evening, members of the board. It's my pleasure tonight to be able to recognize Ella Larson as our Christmas or holiday card contest winner. And Ella, if you want to go ahead and come up, she's with her mom Diana here tonight, but I've got a funny story about this. So, with it being a crazy COVID year, I had asked the art, I told the art teachers just to send me any holiday card submissions that they had had, and I pulled out all the ones that we had had in the past and and I let the central, I put them out to vote. And so, there were two cards that were tied. And so, I had them laying there and I turned them both of, both of them over and they were both hella's. One was from when she was in the, in elementary school and one from high school. So, either way, it didn't matter. She was going to be our winner. So, it's been a crazy year, but for her, she was the twenty-twenty Mardi Gras poster winner and now the holiday winner for the school system. So, we are very proud of you, Ella. And we are giving her her frame print over here and twenty-five holiday cards and a check. If you want to go over there, we'll take your picture.
Just go, just go on up there and take it. Just walk up there.
Go ahead.
If you want to take a picture, yeah.
Well, she's obviously talented. She's won two or three of the contests.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Next on our agenda, we have our audit report from Anderson Smith and Wyke, their representative.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope everyone's doing well.
Yes, sir.
My name is Andy Deal. I'm a partner with the accounting firm Anderson Smith and Wyke. And we're here to present the audited financial statements for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And I apologize, you don't have the nice bound financial statements. I'll be honest, I put too much faith in the post office last week, so that is, that is why you don't have them. But they, you know, they should get to the district tomorrow, which I realize does us no good tonight. So, I do apologize for that.
Um. We do have a copy though, so that's all right.
Yeah, that's good. Yep. And I think there's a, the PDS up there too, so.
Right.
Um, I'm just going to be brief tonight. I, I know you, you all have a lot to do with everything going on this year. I'm sure there's a lot for you guys to, to address and handle, so I'll be as quick as possible. If anybody has any specific questions, feel free to stop me. If I, you know, go too fast, feel free to slow me down. We will start on page one tonight. On page one, we have our first auditor's report. Um, there's four auditor's reports in these financial statements. You have one on the financial statements and then the other three are compliance related. So, this report here is on whether the financial statements are in accordance with GAAP. And we are pleased to report that this is an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion, you could also call that a clean report. That means we didn't note anything that would cause us to modify our audit opinion. So, you know, pleased to report for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, we've got an unmodified, clean opinion. Um, next, if you'll flip over to page fourteen. On page fourteen here, this is your balance sheet for the governmental funds. So, this is going to be all your funds at the district except for the child nutrition fund. Child nutrition fund has a little bit different accounting rules, so their statements are presented in another part of the financial statements. But, um, again, the balance sheet for your governmental funds is a very important statement for a school district. This is going to, you know, show you your assets and liabilities as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. It's going to show you, you know, how much cash you have, how much fund balance you have as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And then if you flip to the next page, page fifteen, you've got your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. You could also call this an income statement or a P and L, profit and loss. Um, this is going to show you all your revenues and expenses for all the governmental funds. Um, if you look at the first column here on page fifteen, third number from the bottom is going to show you your net change in fund balance for the general fund. So, for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, we had about a four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar decrease in fund balance for the general fund. You know, that, that is not uncommon, uh, you know, you know, just across the state. You know, we're seeing a lot of districts lose fund balance. It's just with the rising cost of like personnel and benefits, it's just real hard to, to add to that fund balance. Um, one thing I would suggest in, in years to, uh, not years to come, but see your ending fund balance on the first column here for the general fund. The ending fund balance is about two-point-nine million, just under two-point-nine million. Um, you know, we would recommend trying to grow your fund balance as much as possible. Just due to the pandemic, you know, we're afraid there's going to be cuts at pretty much every level, state, federal, local. You know, if you shut the economy down for however long, you know, there, there's going to be less tax revenues and, you know, you know, we wouldn't be surprised to see cuts, not necessarily this year, but next year and the year after. So, you know, we would recommend growing your fund balance, you know, um, you know, as much as you can. Um, if you look at the, the second column on, on this page, scroll up to the top there. State Public School Fund, second column, total revenues for the State Public School Fund are forty-six million dollars. So, if they cut that by five percent, that's about two-point-three million. So, say you get a five percent cut at the state level, that's two-point-three million dollars and your ending fund balance is two-point-nine million. So, that fund balance is there to kind of, you know, the larger that is, the more blow you can withstand as far as cuts at the federal and state level. So, just one thing we recommend to all our districts is, you know, try to grow that fund balance as much as possible. We realize it's tough, um, but that's, that's just our, you know, our advice because, you know, I'm afraid there is going to be cuts in the coming, coming years.
May I ask one question right there?
Yeah.
Now, when you say grow it, are there a certain percentage, as an accountant looking at numbers all the time, are there a certain percentage you would think that the fund balance needs to stay at in your professional opinion? Or would it just be you want to make sure like a three-month, four-month running?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, we get that question a lot. It's a great question. It, it's hard to just say, you know, here's the percentage or here's the dollar amount because every district's different. Every district gets a different amount of county funding and, and local funding and, and local grants, you know, from nonprofits and maybe just individuals. So, it, it's hard for me to say your fund balance needs to be here and you'll be healthy. My advice would be just, it definitely, in my opinion, needs to be higher than it is now. Just like I said, if you, if you get a five percent cut at the state, you know, the only thing you can do other than wipe out your fund balance is just cut. And to be honest, there's probably been a lot of cuts made the past few, you know, you know, you, you can only cut so much, but it, it's a great question. And I, like I said, I wish you, um, I wish I could give you like a percentage or a dollar, but just off the top of my head, that, that's just real tough to give, just, just an exact amount. Um, and, you know, we can sit here and say it needs to be this and that, but being honest, like, you know, you've got to have support from your county commissioners. You've got to have, you know, just, um, you know, the district just kind of to buy in to, to grow that fund balance or it makes it really tough. And, and honestly, just the rising benefit costs, like healthcare costs, pension costs, I mean, it, it makes it really tough because you've got less employees now and more employee cost even with less employees. So, I mean, it's just, it, it makes it hard, but, um, I know that's not the answer you wanted, but it.
That's all right. That sort of really did answer my question, believe it or not, because I knew they, it was just one of those things. We have always tried to keep our fund balance. And you've been here long enough, you've seen it. We've always tried to keep our fund balance at a good level, but sometimes, sometimes we just don't know the right amount. But we, I, I like a healthy fund balance.
Yeah.
Sometimes we get told to use it pretty often.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We, we see, we see that often too, so you're, you're not unusual in that.
I got a question along the lines of Mr. Patrick. Um, a district our size, what are you typically seeing as an average fund balance for a district our size? Are we, are we about average or are we a little less than what average?
Say you're a little less than average. I'm not going to say you're like, you know, way below average. I, I would say maybe for a district your size, because you, you guys aren't small. You know, you're not big, but you're not small either. And I, I would say for a district your size, maybe a little below average, but I, it, it's kind of, especially the rural districts, we're just seeing them really bleed fund balance. And maybe it's more average now, um, after the, you know, the past couple years. Very few districts, especially rural districts, have added to their fund balance. So, you know, we're seeing at pretty much all of our, um, you know, rural districts low fund balances and, and losing fund balances. Some of them did better this year with the stimulus money, um, some of them didn't. Um, I, I would say a few of them did better. Most of them didn't. But, um, yeah, I would say just, just for your size, it, it's probably a little below average to average. Okay. Um, the next thing we'll go over is on page twenty-three. So, got some good news here to talk about. Um, on page twenty-three, we have the statement of cash flows for the school nutrition fund. Um, one good, you know, one thing we look at to see, you know, how well financially a school nutrition department is doing is how much cash did they make? Due to the accounting rules, uh, Fund Five or school, the school nutrition fund, they have to record all these crazy liabilities for the pension fund, the, the retirement healthcare fund and, um, you know, other stuff like that. So, it really makes it hard to look at the balance sheet and income statement and see what they did because of all the pension plan stuff. Um, but on the, uh, statement of cash flows, it, it makes it pretty easy to see, you know, did they make cash? Did they lose cash? You know, if a, if a school nutrition program keeps losing cash year over year, then your general fund basically just has to bail it out and that makes it harder to add to that fund balance that we just talked about. And here at Haywood County Schools, I think historically, the past few years, they, uh, it's been really hard on them to, to grow their cash balance. They've been losing cash. And, um, this year, if you look at the third number from the bottom, the net increase in cash was just under three-hundred-thousand dollars and their beginning cash was, you know, just over two-hundred-thousand. So, I mean, they more than doubled their cash. And, um, you know, that, that's a great sign. Um, you know, that, to me, that just shows that, that they, you know, use their funds wisely and, and were very diligent about trying to grow that cash balance, which I, I think they have been for the past several years. Um, so, you know, that, that's great news and I'll be honest, we don't see that much at all. Like that big of an increase in cash, um, that is, that is rare to see, especially in mountain districts. You know, the transportation cost through the mountains is more, um, and, and the rural districts, it, it makes it tough. So, you know, that is, that is a great sign. They're increasing cash there. Um, the next thing we'll go over is on page sixty-five. On sixty-five, this is where the compliance portion of the audit starts. Um, there are three auditor's reports for compliance. Um, the first one here, this is on internal control over financial reporting and internal control over compliance. Um, we did have one finding related to this report. Um, the school food service fund was over budget for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And anytime you're over budget, anytime they're over the board-approved budget, that's a finding. Um, so, we'll, we'll talk about that more later, but, you know, nothing here except the, uh, the school nutrition fund was over budget. And again, we'll, we'll talk about that in just a second in more detail. Um, if you flip over two more pages, page sixty-seven, this is our report on compliance with federal programs. And this report, we had no findings. It's an unmodified report or a clean report, so that is good news. And if you flip over two more pages, page sixty-nine, this is our report on compliance with the major state programs. And again, this is a clean report, an unmodified report, um, which is good news. Um, if you flip to page seventy-three, that is where, um, the, the finding is noted. Um, like I said before, the, the school food service fund, uh, they, their expenditures, expenditures or expenses exceeded the board-approved budget. And, um, like I said, that is a finding. Um, one thing I'll say, you know, this isn't unusual and especially for fiscal year twenty with the pandemic. They had way more activity in June than they've ever had before, just getting the meals out to folks and, and just, there was a lot of stuff that happened in June, um, you know, that, that's never happened before. So, it just, it, long story short, it made it hard to budget for all the expenditures um, just because, you know, they just hadn't really been through that before. And, and another thing too, we see this, normally if a district goes over budget, it's in Fund Five because, like I said, Fund Five has different accounting rules. So, all of their internal reporting is on like a full accrual basis, whereas budgets are on cash basis. So, it, it makes it really tough, even, you know, I'm a CPA, even for me, it makes it really tough to kind of do that cash to accrual adjustment, so you can take, you know, their numbers and put them on budget numbers. So, that just kind of muddies the water even more. Um, so, like I said, you know, this isn't something that, um, you know, we see this a lot where districts go over budget in Fund Five. So, it's not, you know, it is a finding, but it's, it's nothing that's out of the ordinary. Um, that's all I have on the financial statements. Um, one thing I do want to talk about, um, you know, one thing we're required to do is if we have difficulties in completing the audit, we're required to communicate those difficulties to the board. Um, just due to auditing standards, that, you know, that's a requirement. Um, as always, we had no difficulties in, in getting our audit done. Um, I would also just, you know, like to thank the finance department and, and every department at the, you know, Haywood County Schools, but especially the finance department. As everybody knows, they had a ton of stuff go against them this year. Um, Angie retired, Leanna got sick. You know, Bob, you know, he, he did what he could, but he was in and out of the hospital. But, you know, with all that said, we still got the statements done by the extended due dates. I mean, they're not late or anything like that. We, we did have one finding, but just given everything that happened in twenty-twenty, you know, I, I, you know, I can't thank them enough for just, you know, getting us what we needed to do to complete the audit. And, um, you know, I'll be honest, I thought it was going to be a lot worse with, with everything that, that's happened here, you know, with, with Leanna and, and Bob.
It is twenty-twenty.
And, and it's twenty-twenty and, you know, you know, when, when we left the field that week, you know, I, I called Dr. Nolte and I was just tickled pink. I was like, you know, I, I'll be honest, I thought it was going to be worse than it was and um, it, it wasn't that bad at all. And I, I just, I would really like to thank the finance department and, um, you know, Nathan and, and everybody in there. They, you know, if we asked for stuff, they got it to us and, and a lot of them are knew what they're doing. And they just, they had a great attitude and just, you know, they weren't going to give up. So, you know, we, we really appreciate that on our end, so that helps. Just, just want to add that, but, um, other than that, that's all I have to present tonight unless somebody has questions or anything like that.
Do they have questions, comments?
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Y'all have a good rest of your year.
All right. Dr. Nolte.
Uh, Mr. Francis, members of the board, staff and guests. Uh, it is my pleasure, um, to announce that North Carolina, each year is allowed to nominate one principal from the state to be in the running for the National Association of Secondary School Principals. And we have that principal. And we are so proud to introduce Lori Fox to you. I think Lori has logged on, um, to make a comment or two. And, um, we'll let her do that at this time. And if she doesn't, then I'll make a comment or two about her and Lori knows it's probably better if she logs in. But we, we are really, really proud of her. She was our regional principal of the year and is now the state's one and only nominee for the National Secondary Principals Award.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to thank everyone for this award. It's definitely not an individual award. When a principal gets recognized, it's a, it's a team award and it's representative of many different people. But I just want to say, um, Haywood Early College is a special place and I am so thankful for the hard work and the commitment from our students and faculty on a daily basis to continue to work hard and they value education. And we are definitely growing during this time period and I, I just couldn't be prouder to be their principal. And then just a big thank you to the many mentors. Many are sitting in that room tonight and several other ones, um, who have taught me how to be a leader. And they didn't just invest their time and effort, but they lived and they led and I was able to take um, some good notes and try to emulate them. And then, uh, thirdly, just to brag on our, our current group of principals. I've had the opportunity to be around some great principals lately and I can't say enough about what's at home in Haywood County. So, I'm just thankful to get to represent, um, our principals in our district and the Midland High School Principals across North Carolina and the secondary principal of the year award ceremony. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Fox. I know that, uh, I'm sure you might have a, a parent that might get a little bit of credit once in a while, but I wouldn't give him too much.
I'll give him what he deserves.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Fox.
Thank you all.
We are very proud of you. Thank you very, very much.
That's unbelievable.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte.
Awesome. Awesome. Congratulations.
May I introduce the next one?
Yes, sir.
Uh, board members, uh, we had Dr. Mark Jaben come and speak at our, um, work session. We know that there are probably about fifty people streaming in right now, listening, which is a substantially higher number than we had at the work session. Dr. Jaben, uh, Dr. Putnam introduced him at the work session. He is our, uh, medical director for Haywood County. He has been a friend, been a friend of the school system during COVID. He, uh, met with our teachers, uh, in large. He uh, met with our teachers uh, in large group early in the year. He's met with many small groups. He uh, is our go-to person to call. Uh, and when I say we call him, Dr. Putnam calls him, but he has been very, very helpful and we appreciate him coming uh, back tonight just to uh, lead us into our discussion um, about COVID and uh, what's going on in schools uh, as he did the other evening. Thank you, Dr. Jaben.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. I guess when we were here all together Thursday evening, um, we were talking about the surge in cases that we've seen in Haywood County really in the last month. Um, and I, I think that's not news to anybody. Um, I think that uh, what we're now seeing in the last week or so is the bump from Thanksgiving. And since I was here on Thursday, um, we have added somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty cases in the county. And just for some perspective, back in the late summer, early fall, we were adding like twenty cases a week. So you can kind of get a sense of that. Um, back then it was taking us a month or more to add the next one hundred. We've added the next one hundred in the last three days. So that's just sort of, um, I think kind of says it all in terms of where we are in the county. How I think that affects the school system, um, which by the way, uh, the school system has done really, I think, a very good job of trying to put practices and policies in place. Is it perfect? No, it's not perfect. Trying to herd kids and keep them distanced and masked and separate is, is an impossible task. Um, and I don't think that any of us would say that it's been done absolutely to the, to the letter. But what it has accomplished is, and Trevor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but at least up until this last week, although there were cases in the school, uh, there was no evidence of any transmission in the school. Is that still, still be the case? Um, as the prevalence grows, however, that's going to be a hard standard to, to maintain. I can tell you that uh, over the week this morning, uh, when the staff walked in, there were a hundred plus ca- new cases on the desk. What I think is a little bit different now as opposed to even a week ago is how many of those involve students and teachers and staff. So I'm not sure where this is going to go right now, but I think we knew from the very beginning that cases in the school system were much more likely to come in from outside than to originate in the school. And I think that we have certainly seen that and now we're seeing it uh, play out uh, as part of the surge that we're seeing overall. I think uh, if I had an explanation for why that's happening now, I think that uh, because we have a, had a low prevalence relatively speaking in the county for, for quite a long time, people have gotten used to behaving in a certain fashion. And I think many, many, many people are doing their best to try to um, follow the public health guidelines in terms of distancing, washing hands, avoiding crowds, um, wearing masks. Uh, it's hard to wear a mask all the time and it's hard to wear a mask everywhere you go. And what we see repeatedly are people who contract COVID, who have tried to be really careful. But the one time they weren't, bingo, that was the time. And I think as people have had more and more experience over the last few months, maybe I'll let it slide here. I got by okay. Uh, I think the human nature is such that we just sort of start to assume that we're always going to get by okay. And that probably worked uh, because there wasn't as high a prevalence. And so if you went somewhere, chances of bumping into somebody were much lower. And I think we're past that now. I, I think there's enough in the county that um, trying to skate by uh, isn't going to be as successful as it might have been up until the last, the last month. This does pose a problem, obviously, because if you have lots of staff out on quarantine, it becomes hard to run your school. Uh, as kids are out, then parents need to be out because if the kids are little, it's hard to leave little kids at home. So it starts to affect the workplace environments as well. So the whole thing just sort of starts to snowball. Um, so my, my plea to, to everyone in the school system, parents who have kids in the school system as well as people who work in the school system, now is a time to be consistent, consistent about the practices that you've been doing um, in your home, when you go out, um, and at, at work. I don't know what else we, do we want to go through some of the stuff we talked about the other night or?
Uh, uh, maybe just see if the board has additional questions.
Yeah, please.
You want to have questions for Dr. Jaben? Like you said, we went over a lot of information Thursday night and um, I would urge people that are, did not get to stream it the other night, when it gets up on the website, whether it's up on the YouTube channel yet or not, I don't know, but there's a lot of good information that we could, you can garner from that YouTube.
I do want to, I, I do want to just comment on one thing that we did talk about, um, because I know everybody is aware of the CDC guidance that came out in terms of length of quarantine. Um, and I spent a fair bit of time on the phone today talking with some folks about that. Um, and, and mostly I want to comment on that in light of what we are having to do at the health department just to keep our heads above water, which is we've had to modify what we have been doing. Up to now, we've been contact tracing, we've been, been case investigating and following all of the people who are positive in the county through to their time of clearance. And we have been following all the people who we've asked to be in quarantine as well. And this, the sheer volume of this has made it absolutely impossible unless we just want to send our staff to the looney bin because they go crazy. And so we've had to make some modifications, which include we're not following quarantine, people that have been asked to be in quarantine like we were before. This does not affect the school system because the school nurses have been doing much of that work all along and they will continue doing that work all along. Where it will impact people perhaps is in what happens when somebody gets symptoms, gets tested, is positive. That's where it may be a problem because there's now a lag there. Um, so what I would also make a plea to people is if you have suggestive symptoms, if you think that you're going to go get tested, it is really important that you isolate at that point, not to wait till a test result, uh, to isolate or not. Isolate at that point and identify people who you think may be a close contact to you. So if you develop symptoms on a Wednesday, you want to go back two days beforehand and consider anybody who has met the criteria for close contact. That's within six feet for more than fifteen minutes, not wearing a mask. If you, if there are people that you've been around that might meet those criteria, call them up, say, hey, I've now got symptoms, my kid's got symptoms. Probably ought to be quarantined and be careful till we know for sure. Then once, if that result is a positive result, call them back and say, hey, it is positive, you need to be in quarantine. You need to get tested about six days after your exposure. These are things that we have been talking to people about um, for the health department, but we just cannot keep up with that right now. So we're asking the community to take some ownership of doing those things that they maybe before relied on a call from us to do. There's going to be a lot about this in the paper and through the media. And so I just want to add that message because that does, that does change that. Um, the CDC quarantine changes, this has been mis- in, misinterpreted somewhat as we talked about the other night. Quarantine period is still fourteen days. There are some options in the CDC guidance to rather than have to do that whole fourteen days separate from the world, uh, separate from your family, uh, there are some options to make that separation part shorter, but it still requires the person to be masked, distanced, good hand washing all the way through that full fourteen days. And I said this the other night, we've had a public service worker tested on day five, no, no symptoms, was a close contact, never had symptoms. They, they got tested on day five, that test came back negative. They were released on day eight following that CDC guidance, day eleven, they got sick and got really sick. So that's just an example of it doesn't, the quarantine period, the incubation period is still fourteen days, so um, that's, that's what it is. The school system as well, those people are all being followed, school nurses are doing that. So again, nothing really changes for the school system in terms of the modifications we've had to make at the health department. So I just wanted to get that out there to people as well.
You briefly touched on it, but just for greater clarity sake, fourteen days will be our, our quarantine period. Uh, because CDC guidance, current CDC guidance gives those additional or shorter term options for non-congregate settings.
Yeah, thank you, Trevor, for bringing that up. And, and the CDC put those out, they said that places like long-term care facilities, jails, et cetera, where people are on top of each other, that for sure those should stay fourteen days separated. Um, and, and, and I think the, the letter, the spirit of that is that if you work or in a place that people are in close proximity all the time, uh, that would be considered congregant and we should probably follow that to be safer. You know, if you have a workplace and you know, you have, I use the example, they're not have a surveyor, uh, sends employees out to the field to, to survey things. That person's not around a whole lot of other people. That's a situation where you could potentially invoke one of those other options. But we, I think in our discussions, feel like the school sys- schools are a congregate, they're not a congregate living facility, obviously, but they're a congregate facility. And we've had such a good track record so far in terms of spread inside the school, uh, you know, why, why, why change that at this point?
Thank you.
Happy to entertain any other questions?
Any other questions?
Not a question, but, but just to thank you for your availability. I know from um, uh, from a community standpoint as well as school board standpoint, you've made yourself extremely available for questions and, and clarifications and I do appreciate that.
Well, I, I, I thank you a lot for saying that, Bobby. I, you know, I think this all is so confusing. There have been so much, many changes along the way. And I think as, I think it was Dr. Nolte the other night said, uh, we've never been here before. Um, I think having, having that, be able to have these conversations is just so critical. Um, to help people try and figure out how to muddle their way through this and, and we're the same, so I appreciate you saying that.
Any other? Thank you so very much, Dr. Jaben, for coming once again.
I'm happy to do it anytime and, and thanks for the work that all of y'all are doing and happy holidays.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Next we have Dr. Nolte.
Again, special thanks to Dr. Jaben. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we spent um, not quite two hours, I think, the other night talking about um, COVID and um, legitimate concerns from our students and parents and uh, teachers and other staff persons, uh, possible schedules. And I just want to do a very brief survey for people who maybe did not, a survey review for people who maybe did not see the survey that we published on Thursday night or were not listening in last Thursday. So uh, in order to gather information for the second semester, we uh, emailed uh, every student on November the seventeenth with a school system email. That's uh, just under seven thousand students. We emailed every employee with a school system email. Um, that's, we have about eleven hundred employees, so I'm going to say probably uh, in the neighborhood of nearly a thousand folks asking them to help us with this survey. We um, posted a link to the survey and announced that on our website and we pushed it to social media. And we asked that folks return that information by the fourth so we could process it and share it with you and the community. I thought we had a pretty good return, uh, nearly twenty-six hundred responses. I think two thousand five hundred ninety-six. There were a few questions on the survey that we did not share because there was a lot of consistency across, across the uh, major participant groups. Those are about communication and it seems that our students and teachers and parents all agree that there's a good bit of communication going on between school and home and they all know the way that that happens. And we were just really pleased with those responses. Those were the same types of questions that we used in the survey prior to school starting. Uh, the other thing that I want to just thank people for is all the feedback that we received in addition to the survey. Some of that was before the survey, uh, asking us if, if we might not do another survey. And we were thinking about it, but strongly encouraging us to do that. Uh, like me, I know many of you have received texts and phone calls and letters and uh, written statements from people and we value that uh, very, very much. And we received that from a lot of different people. Just real quick on the survey, uh, the first part of the survey were demographic items. We had three hundred ninety-nine classroom teachers respond, which is a large proportion. We have about a little over five hundred that responded to the first survey. So a good proportion of our classroom teachers, nine hundred twenty-one students, uh, eleven hundred thirteen parents. We asked them, you know, what their, their assignments were or what their learning models were. And then we asked them a few questions to get um, at their concerns about schedules and about safety. So the first question that we asked uh, really to students was how, how do you learn best? And really, uh, two-thirds of them said in person, which I thought was pretty interesting. We asked uh, teachers, students and parents uh, how they believe students should learn during COVID nineteen. And those um, survey indicators were spread across three options, remote, only blended and all in person. All three of the major groups, teachers at forty-six point eight percent, students at thirty-seven point eight nine percent and parents at fifty-six point one five percent indicated in-person learning. So we thought that was pretty telling. We specifically asked them about Plan A and B because we know we're going to provide remote-only learning throughout the remainder of the year. Not only do we want to do that for people who want that option, but it's a requirement from the state. And so we also know that right now we have Plan A available for elementary and Plan B available for secondary and we asked them what they thought about that. I think as a board, you all were considering, you know, what's the general plan in second semester? Knowing that the situation could get mu- much worse, the governor could uh, offer additional restrictions or closes down. We hope over time that cases will diminish and we'll have fewer cases of weeks or months down the road and we might have more freedom, but in general, I think that's what you're considering. So under Plan A, uh, we asked what should that plan look like if we have the plan, uh, Plan A opportunity? Uh, again, spread over three options, in person, five days a week, in person, four days a week or blended under Plan A. Teachers, thirty-four point eight percent picked four days instead of five. Students were really evenly split on either end of the continuum, which I thought was interesting. Thirty-two point five uh, and thirty-two point almost seven for five days a week or blended. So they really ran the gamut there in their responses. And those are mainly middle school and high school students responding to the survey. And then parents under Plan A were pretty, pretty uh, consistently requesting at fifty-two point eight three percent, five days in person. And then we asked about Plan B. And so the options there were the uh, five days per week, every other week, like we're doing currently with middle school and high school. Uh, a two-one-two model where one group is there two days. Uh, there's a remote learning day in the middle and uh, the other group is on two days. And then we had heard a lot of people talk to us, teachers in particular, who were saying on Plan B, we really would like to have each student each week. Um, but we also heard some people saying they wanted students in front of them as much as possible. And so we gave this option of a three days on, two days off each week for the A and B groups. Uh, that was not a very popular option. Uh, Jill Barker's very often reminds me, it's never one thing. So I think that's a combination of uh, not understanding the option or uh, thinking about managing that as a teacher or a parent. Um, the uh, greatest responses were from teachers was two days on, one day off and two days on at sixty-two seven, sixty-two point seven percent. And then students and parents uh, under Plan B, uh, the largest response for students and parents was five days each week, like we're doing now, week on, week off. Forty-eight point three two for students and forty-eight point six one for parents. I thought that was really interesting because the students are primarily middle and high school students responding and the parents who responded. and the parents who responded, for the most part, had elementary children, so I thought that was pretty interesting. And then we, uh, we asked the safety question, and we simply lifted the safety question that we used back prior to the first semester. That asked about public health regulations, uh, disinfecting schools, sanitizing materials being available, the use of protective equipment, childcare, adjusting to school, bus transportation, having in-person interactions, uh, someone in the family being medically compromised. And then I added one item, uh, which was, you know, I really don't have a lot of concerns. And the, the biggest difference between these responses and the responses that we received prior to the first semester is they seem to be more evenly distributed. Certainly, there were concerns in all of those areas. Uh, back at the beginning of the year, there were, um, about three areas that were much larger than the others. So, that's the summary. Again, I, I did that primarily tonight for folks who maybe didn't get to hear the conversation, the long conversation that we had on Thursday. And at this point in time, board, I just, um, defer to you to, uh, carry on additional conversation or, address the survey results or other feedback that you've received.
I'd just like to make the comment that we did receive, each board member did receive a letter, and some survey results from our local Haywood County Associations of Educators. We've got that information in front of us, just want to make that a public comment. And, um, I appreciate you doing the survey and, and what we've done so far. Then I know a challenge for a lot of folks, but I appreciate all the, the work in trying to get the survey put together and everything. You don't have any questions or comments? Okay. Anything else on this study? Okay. Carry on then.
Mr. Chairman, I don't hear a, um, a change of discussion from you all. I'm wondering if, um, if we don't change what we're doing right now, if we might add maybe an additional remote day per month. For, uh, teachers, we know that they have really, uh, been getting after it. Some of our early test scores look really, really good. You know, and that's not the only indicator, but that looks really good. We know too, from looking at failure rates that we described briefly on Thursday, that the students who are in person seem to be doing better than the ones, um, every day, better than the ones that are remote only. So, uh, with your permission, if you're not making other changes, I would request that we add a remote learning day in January, and one in February, and one in March, and one in April, maybe, spreading them across the A and B rotations, and then announcing those.
Okay. I think we just need to make a motion to that effect.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to that effect, that looking at the results, like you say, they, they need those extra time to help plan and, uh, do grading and everything according to the survey and the results, and, uh, we want to give them all the opportunities they can. Again, thanking them for their great work, but anyway, that's not part of the motion. No, I will make the motion that we do adopt the extra remote learning days.
Thank you.
Say it with Dr. Rogers. The motion was made by Mr. Rogers, say it with Dr. Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, board members. We will confer, uh, in, in the superintendent's office and get that, uh, those days out prior to the break, uh, hopefully prior to the end of the week.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next we have Ms. Jenny Wood on the calendar. I thought the calendar might change again.
Looks like it's going to. But that's okay. So I'm just going to talk to you about the remote learning workdays, and I know we, we spent some time on Thursday going over this, but just for, um, if there's any more questions and just for some more clarification. So the revised calendar law mandated us adding five remote learning workdays into the current calendar that we had, with the option to add five more, so that's what we just did. Um, we took four of those existing optional workdays that we already had scheduled, and one early release day, and we assigned those as the five remote learning workdays. Um, remote learning workdays are instructional days, and we do count those hours. They are not snow makeup days, however, we can swap them, which is what we did on December first, where we took a, uh, previously scheduled remote learning workday and just flip-flopped it with a regular instructional day, so, um, we will give forty-eight hours notice to teachers when we, uh, uh, are going to call a remote learning workday, and that is in order for the students to have assignments at home, to front-load assignments. Um, no instructional days have been added or taken away and replaced with remote learning workdays. Remote assignments on those days may not always be digital assignments. But all students, K-12, all students should expect assignments on remote learning workdays. Teachers are not required to, um, do Google meets or meet with students on remote learning workdays because those are optional teacher workdays. So they do not have to provide any online instruction. And like I said, they are, um, optional teacher workdays, so employees can take accumu- accumulated appropriate leave. And, um, just to remind everyone that our calendar is driven by instruction, and our employees work, our certified employees work two hundred and fifteen contracted days around that instructional time. Um, and that, and that consists of holidays, annual leave days, workdays, and instructional days. Do you guys have any more questions about the remote learning workdays?
Thank you for clarifying that and getting everything a little more understandable for.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Wood. I assume Ms. Shipman is coming in remotely, is that correct? Okay. Ms. Shipman, you're on.
Thank you, Chairman Francis. Good evening, board members. Um, I am just really excited to have received a grant for our after-school programs. This grant is for fifty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. It is from Dogwood Health Trust, and I will be working with our after-school directors and our principals to get some materials and technology and just, um, supplies that our programs need. So, um, we have great after-school programs in our county, and I know that childcare is much needed for our families. And this grant will help us continue to provide a high-quality, um, environment for all of our after-school students. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shipman. That's good news.
Yes, it is.
It's always good to get a grant that'll help us in an area that we need help.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Putnam, you're up.
Mr. Kirkpatrick is giving me the, yeah, I like move along, so I'm minding well here. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, do want to make, make you aware of the most recent draft of conference realignment. The High School Athletic Association basically, uh, recently decided to use a three-factor, uh, identification system for classifying 1A, 2A, 3A, 4A, and they did so in an even fashion of twenty-five percent for each classification. That said, looking at the first draft, I'm happy to report that it looks like we will be in conference fifty-four, both schools, Pisgah and Tuscola. East Henderson, Franklin, North Henderson, Pisgah, Smoky Mountain, Tuscola, and West Henderson. So, uh, I wanted to share that information. Again, it is first dra- draft and preliminary, but, um, now that they've provided it to us, Dr. Nolte and I would be hard-pressed to let go. We're like a dog on a bone at this point, so. It's been a long, hard struggle, and we're pleased with the first draft.
We are too. We're going to see that rivalry continue and have even more meaning than it does already. Back to the days when we were in the same conference, and now we will be, if this goes through. We're excited about it.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Ms. King, did anyone sign up to address the board during open session? Thank you, ma'am. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the November fifth, November ninth closed session minutes, November ninth and November sixteenth, regular and called open session minutes. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Ronnie Clark has made a motion, seconded by Mr. Dr. Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next we have Ms. Brandy, Ms. Stevenson. I assume she's coming in remotely today.
I am.
Okay.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, tonight I bring to you an agreement to host a student that is in the program to get her master's degree in occupational therapy. This is a, um, staff member that left us, um, as a teacher to go get her master's in occupational therapy, and she's coming back to us, um, to do her internship, so, um, I bring this to you for approval tonight.
Okay. Any question from Ms. Stevenson before we have a motion or anything? Okay. Need a motion for?
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, agreement that Ms. Stevenson just.
Okay, then we have a motion for Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Hey, Mr. Francis, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Be safe.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next we have Ms. Barker.
Chairman Francis, members of the board, on Thursday night, I brought to our district improvement plan proposed for the next two years, and also you have had a chance to preview the school improvement plans. At this time, do you have any questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the district and school improvement plans as presented.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say it with Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussions on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Next on the agenda, we are, we're going to plan on having a letter possibly to the governor and to our legislative delegation. At this time, I have not been able to, uh, have time to put it together. So, uh, what I would suggest we do, instead of taking action on this tonight, is let us come up with the letter, and I'll send it out an email, and then if we don't have any objection to sending it, we'll go from there. Is that okay, board members?
Agreed.
Okay. What we're trying to do is ask the governor to let us keep vocal control of our school system, open and closing, and what plan we're on. And I think that, uh, if it's done from a statewide level, it doesn't include the local areas and represent us the way we are here in Haywood County. And, uh, I've had several board members express concerns about that, so we'll put something together, then we'll tune it up and send it out, let everybody look at it, and we'll correct it and make it what you would like to see, and then we'll send it, okay? All right. So no action on that item. Next we have Dr. Putnam. The facility needs.
Mr. Chairman, you've been provided a copy of the facility needs survey, and we covered this, uh, at the work session. Essentially, the facility needs survey, it's a rather lengthy document as he holds it up. Uh, but it basically evaluates every facility in Haywood County, considers the number of students, the age of the building, the amount of square footage inside, the amount of parking square footage, and what it will take to keep or maintain these facilities. It also helps pinpoint your highest, uh, areas of need, so it's required of, uh, the Department of Public Instruction every five years, and we have completed that survey. And it's, uh, before you for signature and return to DPI.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we approve this, uh, facility survey. I know you've read all hundred and something pages there, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we've reviewed a lot of that, so thanks to the hard work of everybody in every school and maintenance department, because I know there's a lot of hard work went into it, so. Thank you.
Well, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say it, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. No, Mr. Rogers, I have not read all a hundred and something pages of that. But I'm sure Dr. Putnam has.
I assure you, Dr. Nolte and I both have laid eyes on this, as well as all of our maintenance department and our maintenance directors.
Just wanted to clarify that. Next we have our policies from Dr. Putnam.
Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, one policy for first read. It is, uh, policy thirty-four twenty, student promotion and accountability. Uh, this has been vetted through Teresa Cook, who's our, one of our accountability folks, and she has, she concurs with the changes. Essentially, the, there's no substantive changes to the policy, it just updates the hyperlinks and information in other resources section.
Okay. We'll table that for thirty days for public comment.
And then, Mr. Chairman, you have, uh, policy forty-three, uh, forty-five student discipline records, uh, up for second reading.
I'll make a motion that for the second reading, under the policy that, uh, Mr. Putnam let us have last month to look over, that we should all look, have already had the chance to look over for second reading, policy forty-three, forty-five student disciplinary records, forty-one twenty and thirty-six twenty. I make a motion that we approve them for the second reading.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Kirkpatrick. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second with Dr. Rogers. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Thank you.
Next we have our building and grounds chair tonight is going to be Mr. Jimmy Rogers. I think they have a couple of items they'd like to bring forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Buildings and Ground has met previously, and give me just a moment to bring this up again. Okay. Buildings and Grounds would like to present as a motion to approve the Haywood County Schools Board of Education Central Office interior renovation contract with the PFA Architects, PA and John Bergen Construction LLC.
Okay.
Award their contract.
We have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Say it, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Now.
Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Now, this is the approval for just the contract that we looked at last month. And so this right here will get the ball going to get the project started up at the central office.
Execution of the contract, yes, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, we have a, another motion at this time that we would like to approve the funding of the Haywood County Schools Board of Education Center Central Office interior renovation, using our existing capital fund balances.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers, seconded by Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any question or comments on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a few comments. As we heard before mentioned in our audit report, how we need to be holding on to our fund balances and hoping them to gain. Now, this is a Now, this is a different fund balance. This is our capital fund balance. It's different than our operating fund balance. So it is two different balances we're talking about here. We're not talking about using our capital fund balances, which is uh, to help our operations of our school system. Uh, this is for capital projects and uh, that's a comment I'd like to make and, and uh, at this time.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll ask for a division. All those in favor, raise your hand. All right, there's three. Mister Henson, you got your hand raised?
No, sir.
Okay, opposed. Raise your hand. Motion fails. Okay?
Mister Chairman, that's all the Buildings and Grounds had us tonight. Thank you.
All right, let's see what's in store in the finance committee. All right, finance committee chair, Mister Ronnie Clark, you're up.
Uh, Mister Francis, we, the finance committee met earlier and we want, I want to bring the monthly financial reports to the board. Uh, we reviewed everything. Everything looks good. I need to bring it to approval, please.
Okay, we have a motion from Mister Clark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mister Nesbit, is that correct? Okay. Thought I heard you. Uh, we have a motion and a second. The financial reports at this time, are there any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, also, uh, we want to add, uh, the finance department wants to add Amanda Robinson as a part-time employee for nineteen point five hours a week to help with special projects through the end, probably till June thirtieth. Uh, and these projects include W-twos, the supplements, a bonus pay. And uh, there's like twelve a list that she's an expert in, that they need help until the finance department is fully staff everybody back and everything. So I'm gonna bring us to a motion to uh, hire Amanda Robinson for nineteen point five hours a week.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mister Clark, seconded by Mister Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Just for clarification, I believe that's up to nineteen hours, not necessarily. She will be working continuously, correct?
That's correct. They'll, it'll be project work. She may work that many hours, uh, a lot of weeks, but no, certainly not every week.
Just, just want to clarify that.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, finally, Mister Chairman, uh, as a recap on what we talked about earlier, on the funding for the uh, central office project. Finance committee would like to bring that we borrow one million dollars from the uh, commissioners or however, through their bu- funding uh, availabilities, whatever it is.
Okay.
And we will use the rest of the money from the capital uh, funds outlay to finance this project.
Okay. We have a motion from Mister Clark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doctor Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Just a comment. I think this gives us the ability to uh, to use a phrase we say way too often right now in these uncertain times, uh, to know that we have uh, capital expense, fund balance, steady in case of any catastrophic or crippling dilemmas that we may face.
Yes, sir.
That was gonna be my comment. I'm.
I'll let you make it.
I have a lot, I have a lot of concern about bringing down a fund balance so far, especially after what we experienced with the floods back in Francis and Ivan days. And we had very little capital money to, to try to rebuild before uh, any FEMA money could be brought in. You had to spend it first, but we didn't have any money to spend. So that's my concern. And so I think this, uh, if we don't use it, we can send it back. Uh, and we will pay it back sooner rather than later, I feel confident, but um, that's my thoughts on it. Any other questions or comments before we vote? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, same three voted against. So Mister Kirkpatrick, um, Burnett and Mister Rogers in the negative. Motion carries. All right, anything else from the finance committee?
No, sir, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Doctor Nolte, personnel.
Members of the board, staff and guests, uh, just one side note. We will uh, bring you either at the next board meeting or some other communication, a start date for Ms. Robinson. We did not discuss that tonight. I know it could start upon your vote, but we'll, we'll bring you that for your information. At this time, I'd like to bring the personnel that we discussed previously in closed session uh, for your information, separation from employment. We have fifteen. Employee status changes, one. Leave of absence, five. For your approval, under employment, we have thirteen. Under employee status change, we have thirty-eight. Under substitute teachers, two. Employee coach, one. Volunteer coach, two.
All right, do I hear a motion that we approve the personnel as presented?
Some of them.
Mister Clark's made the motion, seconded by Mister Burnett. Any uh, questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Doctor Nolte. There being nothing else come before the board. Meeting adjourned.